Marcos, before you start, just for clarification on Council Ives's for the record, it's Bill 201637 and the ordinance would be 201642.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that correction.
Members of the governing body, thank you. You have the memo we prepared in your packet, but if it's agreeable to the council, I'd like to present an outline of the proposed amendments to the telecommunications ordinance and then stand for any questions you may have. First, I'd like to address the purpose of the proposed amendments. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to cure certain sections of the telecommunications ordinance that the federal district court enjoined in December of 2013. Those sections included the fee-
Marcos, can you do me a favor and just speak a little bit closer in so that everyone can hear? Can we ask, Jesse, can one of you ask the folks outside to carry their conversation outside if they can because it's bleeding over into this room? Thank you. All right, Marcos.
Thank you. First, I'd like to address the purpose of the proposed ordinance amendments. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to cure certain sections of the telecommunications ordinance that the federal district court enjoined in December of 2013. Those sections included the fee provisions and related definitions in that 2010 telecommunications ordinance. These proposed amendments replace those fee provisions and related definitions with a model ordinance fee provision and related definitions. The ordinance amendments also delete a provision requiring arbitration with telecommunications providers. In our view, arbitration can be costly and unsatisfactory method of resolving disputes and overturning an arbitration decision in court is very difficult. Finally, the ordinance makes the appointment of a telecommunications advisory committee discretionary. In sum, implementing this fee provision will allow the city to better comply with federal law because federal law mandates that cities not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications service. In other words, the city cannot prevent telecommunications providers from using the public rights of way. The only thing the city can do is manage their use and charge a reasonable fee that is competitively neutral and non-discriminatory. Finally, I would like to address some of the provisions of the ordinance that the city is not changing. Normally, I would not talk about sections of the code that are not being amended, but I have heard some misinformation on this topic and I think it's important to clarify that the ordinance amendments do not change the existing land use review processes for telecom providers and therefore will not allow proliferation of cell tower antennas any more than the current ordinance already does. On this point, I would urge the public to look at Section 27-2.13 entitled "Land Use Review." In it, it is worth noting that this section requires an application by the land use department and a public hearing and review by the planning commission. Among other things, the land use review requires construction plans and drawings and the telecom provider has to provide insurance for the term of the franchise. Now I'll stand for any questions.
We're going to open up to the public hearing. I want you to just very quickly readdress what this does not do regarding the ability for telecom companies to begin to put up wireless towers throughout the city without any type of application process, just so we're clear on it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I noted briefly, there is already a section in the telecommunications ordinance called "Land Use Review." This section, among others, had been challenged along with the fee provisions when Century Link challenged the city's ordinance. These provisions are intact. They have been in effect since 2010. They require a land use review, which includes respecting zoning districts, maximum height, aesthetic requirements, archaeological requirements, and other code compliance. There is an application to the land use department, which requires a description of the infrastructure that would be put in, a map, indications of gaps in coverage. There is staff review of the application, public notice and hearing by the planning There is a planning commission review process.
But on that point, Marcos, this does not address what you're talking about.
No, I just want to-
You're stating that there is a-
This already exists in code and none of this goes away. None of this is altered or amended. So any rights that any telecom provider had, have as of today to place facilities in the public rights of way is not enlarged or diminished by these ordinance amendments. The only thing that this ordinance amendment proposes to do is implement a fee and related definitions. And again, it deletes arbitration and makes the telecommunications advisory committee discretionary. So if you, there are no other preliminary questions before the public speaks. I'll wait for further discussion.
Okay, Council Ives. And I think that is, that would be great if you could take some notes, what the public's bringing up, issues that they bring up, make sure to address whether this ordinance does address it or if it's the telecommunications, the other deciding ordinance that's in place. We can make sure the public has their questions and concerns addressed. Council Ives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marcos was just interested in one other aspect of this. In terms of companies that don't use the public rights of way, what is the impact on them of these changes?
Council Ives, there would be no impact. And in fact, the ordinance would not apply to them because the ordinance is specifically directed towards the use and occupancy of the public rights of way. So if you are a telecom provider that has leased land on privately owned land, this ordinance wouldn't apply to you. There's no franchise fee that would apply to you.
All right, let's go to move to the public hearing portion of tonight. Because there's a number of you that would like to address the council, we're going to ask that you keep your comments to two minutes. If someone has addressed the issue already that you would like to speak, if you could just reiterate it. We try to be lenient on the two minutes. If you're adding additional testimony to what could be relevant in the council's decision, but not too much latitude. So if you could just be conscious of your time, that two minutes goes very fast. And I want to be as respectful as possible for individuals who want to make sure that their testimony is heard tonight. So Yolanda, go ahead and she will begin to call up the names. If you're not on the list, don't worry. When the last person on the list has completed their communication to the governing board, you'll be able to come up and address the council still.
So I'll call out the first four and then I'll be calling out names in between. Felicia Trujillo, Ally McGrath, Bill Fishbein, and Ronald Danz for the first four. You can line up if you'd like or you can, or wait there.
Hi. First of all, good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, City Counselors, and City Attorney Brennan. When I stand here, I actually sort of flashback on when this is the principal's office.
Ma'am, can you just real quick, and can you just real quick for all people, can you state your name for the record that way we make sure we start with?
I'm Felicia Trujillo, co-founder of Santa Fe Doctors' Warren on Facebook. I reside at 3004 Hammonds Road, which is now City. And I was saying that when I was standing here, I flashback on when this was my principal's office. So-
You're not in trouble, so you're all right.
I know, but it's hard. Okay. First of all, I want to express my appreciation for the fact that you guys want to take this job and that you work so hard with the public in hammering out details. And recently, I kind of fought back on the electronic billboards, Mayor Gonzalez. And the thing is, I understand that you want to jazz Santa Fe up, you're a young man. But for my bright lights, I went to California and was working for the San Francisco Health Department as a health educator when I met an inspiring city counselor who surprised me by expressing his admiration for how my hometown had the integrity and courage to keep its identity instead of selling out to Americanization. Now, one benefit of this election, is there a groan? Is now everybody knows how the media restricts our information. So I brought you some articles and links to an ABC News story last year about how the Los Angeles Board of Supervisors heated the voices of their firefighters and gave up the proposed income from building 86 antennas that were supposed to be attached to firehouses. But the Firefighters Union 1104 ran radio PSAs explaining the health damages suffered by firefighters exposed to these antennas. Within two weeks of activation, they experienced disorientation, slowed reaction time, vertigo, vital memory loss, and attention deficit amidst life-threatening emergencies. Just what you want in a firefighter. They would go into a fire and lose their sense of direction. Firefighters could point to the International Association of Firefighters 2004 policy to not allow cell towers or antennas on any of their facilities. I'm going to give you a copy of that. Santa Fe makes money by not having antennas everywhere, something famous cities only do in crime-ridden neighborhoods. These are not in upscale neighborhoods, and I've seen most of those cities. In fact, Paris, London, Oakland, Sydney, and Edinburgh. Oh, and I left enough time just to tell you the name of the kind San Francisco councilman who himself was known for courage and integrity.
Thank you.
And that was Harvey Milk.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I do want to make sure that the public knows that the electronic billboard ordinance has been sidelined, and so it's not part of this conversation tonight. Sideline meaning it's on pause to allow for neighborhood and other continuous plans in place. So welcome to offer input on your view of it, but it's not part of the action tonight nor is it on a pathway to make its way to the council at this time. Just want to be clear about that. Ms. McGrath?
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez and council, and thank you for letting me speak as a relative newcomer to this extraordinary city. I've only been here 23 years and I live in Tuskegee. My name is Ally McGrath. I live up really in the country. I came here because my house burned to the ground in Malibu in 1993 from one of those fires. A mere 14 years later, a similar fire broke out, which was the direct result of a cell tower fire. I can tell you from having lived on a street where 15 of us lost absolutely everything that this is not an experience to be taken lightly. I moved here kind of to my surprise, learning to love the incredible multicultural ancient history of this city, the amazing air, the killer landscape and nature, and the biggest surprise of all, which was a community that pulls together and is really concerned about our quality of life, something I think is very, very rare. I've lived in two other cities and not had this experience. For many, many years, I have heard of the serious, really serious damages that being exposed to cell towers give us, human beings and animals. I've heard it from people whose life's work it was. I've heard it from people at the farmer's market whose passion it was on the side. I have to be honest and tell you, I was absolutely flabbergasted when I read the proposition. When I read that it would be possible for those of us that so cherish the way this Santa Fe is in its healthiness, would be confronted with surprise appearances of up to 500 cell towers. I don't care that they're littler or more charmingly designed. The fact remains that this horrendous, health-challenging energy, it can be coming at us at any time. In fact, that school proposition near Gonzalez shocked me because I have kids and a grandkid. The idea that we could wake up with these things all over this city, these eyesores, to destroy this ravishing, increasingly unique place to live, makes me want to join the hundreds of names on this petition, which say, "No, not without citizens' contribution." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Fishbein and I live here in Santa Fe. I am nowhere as near as informed as most everybody has been today about their issues, and I'm a little bit confused about this particular ordinance because it appears to me as the only issue is the fee, that it seems like residents have absolutely no right to object to any telecommunications equipment put on their, in their neighborhoods. So when I, when I first heard that, I had three thoughts. No, no, and no. I think we can all agree that that's ridiculous. It's a law, but it's ridiculous. That residents of Santa Fe have absolutely no right to object to something like a cellphone tower or any number of cellphone towers put in their own neighborhood, reducing the value of their property and showering them with radiation. But apparently, there is something that can be done because the only thing that is to be negotiated is the fee. So I suggest the city council go deep in this and select a fee so high that the telecommunications company will absolutely refuse to buy this deal. Because if there's nothing else that we can do, if we can't protect ourselves, our own health, and our own neighborhoods, because we just haven't been, our rights have been taken away, we've been given a gag order, then you have the power to stop this in your hands by raising that fee so high that it would just be absolutely impossible for these communications companies to put those towers up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Stupin and Jan Boyer?
Yeah, my name is Ronald Danz. I live in 200 Sunny Slope Street. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition Santa Fe Alliance for Public Health and Safety. And I'm speaking to an issue that I think is very dear to all of us, which has to do with aesthetics. And what it seems like, we don't, council doesn't use this fact that that's actually a tool. And there was a recent case in San Francisco. They went to court about their ordinance and the regulation of distributed antenna systems on aesthetic grounds. And they won. And they're allowed to. The city is allowed to. City may approve or deny permits on aesthetic grounds, solely on aesthetic grounds. And I can't believe anybody here would imagine any array, I don't care how nicely it's dolled up, is aesthetically pleasing. You know, there is no way to judge someone else's aesthetics. So if the city of San Francisco was able to win their case, and this is a very recent case, it just happened in September 15th. It was against T-Mobile. San Francisco won. So it just seems to me that, why don't we make more use of that? Because we are all about, what is, in fact, what is the Santa Fe style? It's all about aesthetics. And it's not hard to look at those arrays and say, "They really are lousy-looking things." So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Fred King?
Fred, hold on, sir. If she calls your, no, actually, is that Fred? You don't have to come down when she calls your name. I think she's just wanting to make sure that you know that you're, you can, that you're coming up. So come on up. Go ahead. Yes, we're just trying to provide as much convenience and comfort as possible without you having to stand up there. But if you want to, feel free. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. I'm Jan, I'm Jan Boyer and I lived in Santa Fe for 33 years. I live at 815 Rio Vista Street. And I'm very concerned about these, this situation, and I consider these things to be very ugly. And I just hate to think of our city being known for this kind of ugliness to be imposed on all of us, but I'd rather give the rest of my time to Dr. Bruno.
Thank you. Would you, do you have a statement you want to enter into the record as well? Would you like to enter a statement into the record since you're giving your time up?
I wish you to deny this.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm giving the rest of my time to him.
Thank you.
I'm William Bruno again, PhD. I live at 2357 Botelf Road. William Bruno, PhD. Hello? I'm Bill Bruno, PhD. 2357 Botelf Road. Hopefully, this overhead can be turned on. I pressed the green button. It's green, no, no, it was already pressed. Oh, is it? Okay, there it is. It's coming on. I just wanted to give an example. People are saying that they're ugly. Here's an example of one. This is, I'm sorry for the quality, but there's a house, there's a pole, it's got a big computer on it. Here's a big computer close-up. It's got fans, so at night you can hear the noise. The company, so this one, here's the house down here. Okay, look how tall that thing is. The company called Mobilite, Mobilitei. So you guys have heard from the city attorney that there's a company called Broadband Network of New Mexico that wants to apply for a franchise. Broadband Network of New Mexico is wholly owned by Interstate Transport and Broadband, and they actually do business under the name of Mobilitei. Mobilitei has a habit of putting up towers that are 70 to 120 feet tall in residential neighborhoods, whereas most companies only put ones that are 35 feet tall. If you, you know, if you get, if you're lucky and you get a really good company that really tries to make them look better, I don't know why that's gone, but here's another picture of, this is the best-case scenario. It's like, kind of looks like a lamppost. So I do think it's important to really regulate these things carefully. And I did some research on the so-called model ordinance that this is based on, and I think the councilors would be, will be smart enough to ask the city attorney about which model ordinance they used. It appears that the model ordinance was written in 1999 approximately and was only written in order that municipalities in Illinois would be able to comply with the state law that was written there and that was over, was repealed five years later. And in that state law, in Illinois, municipalities are only allowed to charge a percent of gross to the retail companies, which is to say, your cellphone provider and your phone, home phone provider. So whereas other cities, many other cities charge $1,500 to $4,000 a year per pole, and we could be talking about 90 or more poles easily per year, in this ordinance, there is no such charge per pole. The only charge is, goes to the retailer, which basically means all our phone bills will go up, and the companies like Mobilitei won't pay anything, no matter how many poles they put up, because they're not a retailer.
Thank you, sir.
Do I get two more minutes?
Did you, did you include his four minutes already? You could invite him to get out.
That was left from her.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm going to talk about improving-
State your name for the record, sir?
Yeah, my name is, I'm Dr. David M. Stupin. I have a PhD in physics, and I'm retired from the Los Alamos National Laboratory where I worked for 23 years. And today I speak for myself and not the laboratory. I'd like to speak to you about improving the safety of Santa Fe residents. Could I have the overhead on, please? So this is a photograph, is the photograph of a cell antenna on a lamppost, and you can see that's on fire. This happens about, this happens about five or six times in the US every year. Yes, this is a, I'll try to, I'm having trouble with this. This is a photograph of a lamppost with a cell tower, a cell antenna on the top of it, and the cell tower is on fire. This happens like five or six times a year in the US. Now, I believe this ordinance proposed by the city council regarding telecommunications facilities also allows providers to install cell antennas on street lamps and power poles without engineering input, city review, or oversight. An engineer at PNM said the lampposts are designed to support only, one, a light, and two, a power line to power the light. Any additional weight or wind resistance is very likely to overload lampposts. He said the antennas on, he said, he said the-
Hold on real quick, sir. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Put it, stop. We're having a problem with your mic. Go ahead and continue, and then let's just see if there's an issue, because I was hearing it. Do you think it's proximity to, okay, okay.
Just get back a little bit, sure, try coming back a little bit?
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I think so. And then if we see that you're kind of tapering off, I'm going to ask you to speak up if folks-
So I was just too close to the mic, is that it?
Yeah, you're perfect right there if you keep that, that-
Okay. He said the antennas on each light and power pole need to be evaluated to prevent falling and fires. Now, I care about weight and wind resistance because the multimillion-dollar Malibu fire in 2007 was started by a strong wind that blew down three Southern California Edison power poles to which cell antennas were attached. The Malibu Times reported that it burned 3,000, pardon, 3,800 acres, 36 vehicles, and 14 structures. Structures includes homes and a church. Edison admitted that one of the failed power poles was overloaded with telecommunications equipment, and Edison paid a $37 million fine. Now, in 2011, anybody remember the Los Conchas Wild Fire in the Hammonds Mountains? It started when a tree fell into a power line in a high wind. Fanned by high winds, the fire burned 43,000 acres of forest in one day. That's about one acre per second. Now, Santa Fe has similar winds. Our city is bordered on the north and the east by forests, and many Santa Fe homes are built in these forests. In a dry season, dry foliage and yards in town could also be flammable. Now, cell antennas do burn and fall. I attached to my, this handout I gave you, three lists of cell antenna fires and collapses with a web address for more information for each tower. Typically, four antennas burn and 12 antennas fall each year somewhere in the US.
Thank you, sir. Didn't hear, we want to allow for others to be able to address the council.
Fine, thank you. I'd just like you to, I'd like your approval to change Bill 201613 to improve the safety of Santa Fe residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and your statement will be entered into the record.
And if you have a chance, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, that's what we're looking at right now. Thank you.
Holly Coat or Choat, and then Linda Moore?
State your name for the record, sir?
My name is Fred King. Counselors, Mayor Gonzalez, I'm here, after hearing all of this, I'm here to ask you the question. You and the councilors, is this your vision for a new Santa Fe?
Thank you. Please come up.
John Adar?
Yes, go ahead. Come up and say your name.
My name is Aslan Tiffany White.
Thank you.
And I live off of West Alameda. And I've been, some of these people I recognize because I worked a few years ago with a group of us researching and studying the telecommunications law back in 2013. And I really want to honor all of you for all the time that you spend in your roles and how complicated this issue is. Because as I was studying it myself and in all of the research I've done, I find that it's very complicated. And I know that Santa Fe and its people really care a lot about aesthetics, as we've been mentioning, and as well, the Adobe lifestyle that we live here. There is something that we all talk about with what it's like to live in Adobe buildings. And I know there are historical Adobe buildings that there are very strict- and I know there are historical Adobe buildings that, there are very strict laws and codes about what can be done and not done, so that we preserve the feeling and the historic codes of the Adobe sense of Santa Fe. And so I think that this bill really could be very destructive to the general energy that we all feel as a healing energy here in Santa Fe, and the benefits that those Adobe buildings can offer. If I were to be able to put food coloring, from all of my research, onto the energy that is emitted by these devices, it would be like really ugly colors, you know, splashing out all the time. So I would like to really offer you as well, I've done a lot of research on this, and I can be a resource if you have questions, because it is a complicated issue. My biggest concern is to make that group that meets the council discretionary instead of required. I think because it's such a complicated issue, that it's important to have the resource of those of us who have spent so much of our time researching and do really care about people and care about the city, so that there can be a committee and people who understand and can spend a lot of time researching and supporting you all in revising this bill, so that it can support the safety of the people, the aesthetics, the atmosphere of our Adobe town that we've cultivated over hundreds of years, that just with, you know, one signature and one bad bill with a bunch of electronics could ruin all that. So I really want to bring your attention to your role as protectors of this very unusual, very sensitive people that live in this city, and the potential damages on many, many levels that a lot of extra wiring could do. So I just want to call that to your attention, offer myself as a resource, and ask that you really take this to heart, that we really need a lot of attention and care to this issue. There's a lot of complicated little things that go on with this bill that need, I think, a lot more attention than has been offered in the past, in the recent past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia Whitfield, Catherine Greer. Any of those here? Are you Julia, ma'am? Julia? Julia's next.
Ma'am, who's up right now?
Julia Whitfield and Catherine Greer.
Can you, can you go through the next three, the next three speakers?
Priscilla Logan and Michael Blanchen.
Okay, so, thank you. Hold on real quick, I've got no-
There we go.
Perfect, and if you could just lower the mic right to the center of your mouth, that way we can make sure we all hear it. Thank you. Perfect.
Mayor and councilor, my name is Julia Whitfield, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition Santa Fe Alliance for Public Health and Safety. The city was not legally required to write an ordinance providing for franchise licenses and fees. According to the city, according to the city attorney, the purpose of this bill is purely financial. The city wants to collect a franchise fee equal to the percentage of a company's income from any tower's antennas that are built on city property. To gain this income, the city is proposing to disregard property owners' rights and relinquish oversight for zoning. There is another way to collect income from public property. This could be through leases. Prior to two thousand and ten, the city used to make telecom companies sign leases to put antennas on public property. It could do so again. One location, one application, one lease. In two thousand and ten, the city voted to replace then-existing Chapter Twenty-Seven, requiring site-specific leases, with a new Chapter Twenty-Seven, which replaced leases Okay. The new Chapter Twenty-Seven was one application, one franchise, for as many antennas as can fit in the streets, with exemption from Chapter Fourteen. However, that ordinance was challenged, went to court, and the ruling was that the wording needed to be changed. Now that the city has the wording corrected, our city councilors are voting on this revised The first version of the Chapter Twenty-Seven ordinance prior to any wording about franchises was sufficient. As opposed to the city's two thousand and ten, to the present-day decision to switch from lease fees to franchise fees, we would argue that it is far more in the city's interest to charge lease fees. Those fees would just need to be adjusted, so as not to again be ruled cost-prohibited by a court. This ordinance leaves some giant loopholes. The city is not required to pass this revised ordinance. The original ordinances were sufficient, and we feel the city has gone down the wrong path in considering franchise licenses and fees. Thank you for your consideration.
Monica Steinhoff and Catherine Greer, you're up at the podium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Greer. I live in senior housing behind the Indian School, and I have a social security income that's quite a bit less than what you said about the poor people in the city. I'm supposed to, I am speaking for the Santa Fe Alliance for Public Health and Safety, and also, take a good look at me, I have multiple chemical sensitivity and I have electro hypersensitivity. I, you just don't have no idea. I've been here for three hours and ten minutes sitting in this wifi, and that is a shocking, cruel thing to do to me. I don't go to public libraries, I don't go to doctors' offices, I don't go to libraries. I mean, now I can't even think straight, okay? You lose your orientation, you lose your vocabulary, you lose everything, including your, almost your whole soul. Now, you people are talking about things that are very important, and I am really impressed with the sincerity. You want to take care of the people who are being pushed down, where you're multiple chemical sensitivity, you're electro-sensitivity people. We can hardly go to the grocery store, okay? And if we do, that's the big thing of the week. And I want to point out that the excess board has written some very nice ways to be courteous and have common sense toward your citizenry. Your citizenry with these diseases is huge, but we're hiding, because we can't leave our houses, okay? This is good information on how to treat people like me when you come into a public place to make a public statement. Also, there are ways of connecting your iPads to ethernet, so that you won't have to use the wifi. All of this kind of stuff is a form of serious disability. You're talking about four hundred years past, you're not going to have four hundred years future if you go overboard with this. You won't have bees for the gardens you're talking about. And also, you should look at Mogda Havas, H-A-V-A-S. She has very carefully discovered that there is a kind of diabetes that is caused by this microwave energy. So if you really want to take care of your people, you're going to have to look at this at a deeper level. And thank you for letting me talk.
Janice Simmons in Seaworth. You going to speak, Michael? Go ahead.
Yolanda, can you turn off the light of the projector that's right there, or, I don't know if it's controlled in the back, or maybe the gentleman can. Thank you, sir. You state your name for the record.
My name is Michael Blanchen. I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition Santa Fe Alliance for Public Health and Safety. Closer?
We're just going to have to work with adjusting the mic, because it's as high as it can without bringing feedbacks, so you've adjusted it perfect, and you can speak a little bit louder, too. Thank you.
There's a major insurance and liability issue which has been overlooked. It's the duty of city officials to ensure that actions are not taken which will unnecessarily expose the city to financial liability. If this revised ordinance provides for franchise licenses for distributed antenna systems on public rights-of-way, and one day lead to lawsuits for health damages, who will bear the liability? Lloyds of London, one of the world's largest insurers, is renowned for insuring nearly anything. However, one of Lloyds' underwriting groups, Sterling, foresees such risk that they no longer insure smartphones, smart meters, cell towers, wireless emitting devices. In other words, all wireless radiation emitting devices. You see, Lloyds has learned from the mistakes of the past. They were hit very hard by asbestos litigation in the nineties, and have learned to research issues themselves. They can't afford to rely solely upon government assurances of safety. The first successful lawsuit in the tobacco industry paved the way for many thousands more lawsuits. Those lawsuits are costing the tobacco industry many billions of dollars today. There is currently an injury due to electromagnetic radiation exposure case in Canada, which could potentially pave the way for countless future lawsuits. Regardless of whether that case is won or lost, it's only a matter of time before the first case is eventually won. If the plaintiff in that case wins, she could easily be awarded many millions of dollars. The following example hits much closer to home. An informal poll was taken amongst residents living in close proximity to the antenna installation at fourteen oh two Aguafria Street. Of the nearly sixty respondents, nearly all gave testimony regarding a decline in health. I personally happen to know that some of those individuals have been speaking with attorneys. In the case of a class-action lawsuit, a successful suit could result in a settlement of many tens of millions of dollars. In the two thousand and ten ordinance, the city holds the franchisees harmless from liability. The city is liable, the city is liable for any claims arising from the operation of the facilities. Mr. Ives' amendments remove that clause. This revised ordinance has just one sentence saying that a franchisee can be terminated, a franchise can be terminated for failure for, for failure to produce any insurance certificates that are required. However, nowhere in the bill does it actually require insurance certificates. This is, this is an inconsistency. The City of Santa Fe should ensure that it does not bear the liability for personal injury lawsuits for cellular antennas on the public rights-of-way. The city should ensure that any telecom provider carry a liability insurance that covers lawsuits for damages to health. The city should even stipulate the amount of insurance covered, required of the telecoms for these inevitable lawsuits. That amount should be no less than ten million dollars, and the city should retain the right to increase those coverage requirements for telecoms, as the trend in litigation becomes more apparent to us all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Stephanie Beninato.
Sir, you can leave your statement there for the record, so it's entered in.
Stephanie Beninato.
Ma'am, can you bring down the, there you go, perfect. Go ahead and bring in down more. There you, perfect, yeah, thanks, sorry. Just so we could all hear you.
My name is Monica Steinhoff. Am I talking into it right?
Yeah, I need you to speak a little bit louder, Mona, and a little bit closer into the mic. Perfect. If you can speak just a little bit louder.
Just try it.
I think it's off, so see if there's a-
Okay. Anyway, okay, good. Here I can hear myself.
Perfect, yes, thank you.
I want to address the conflict of, conflict interest first. Oh, yes, thank you. Monica Steinhoff, I live at seven nineteen Galvestero. And I just want to say one little thing about the previous thing, because all over the South Capitol, there are tons of fruit trees that fall on the ground all the time. Maybe there should be a committee to help schoolchildren pick up those, that fruit. I pick them up in the meantime, but I don't need it, really. So I just wanted to add that. So anyway, back to this. I want to address the conflict, and it's much more complicated. I'm also married to a lawyer, and I've talked with him about it, and what you said does not quite free you from that. There's a lot more to it. So I will hand over, I am part of the Santa Fe Council. This wireless really gets to me, so my, I'm shaking and everything, so. Santa Fe Alliance for Public Sa, Health and Safety. So this, I believe, is, yes. So it needs further. You're not, you're not exonerated totally by saying what you said, because there's much more to it. So a few things, I, you know, it was interesting hearing this whole thing about the gardens. I do a garden myself, et cetera, and I grew up on a farm in New Mexico and so forth, and I appreciate that. But it's really interesting. We can talk about pesticides, we can, we, you know, tobacco was considered normal and healthy and everything. It's going to take a long time before we can talk about the electromagnetic frequencies, because it's much more subtle, and because we all think that, we don't even think about the unconstitutionality of not being able to protect our health. And as other people have said, this is, you as, and, you know, I appreciate the work you're doing and everything, but you as a city council, this is way beyond your jurisdiction, actually. Because, you know, instead of the city, you've talked about all the different inspections you have to do. Someone ought to inspect, for example, Aguafria Nursery, that's across from that cell tower. The plants grow faster and bigger. I mean, it's sort of interesting. I've been shopping there for forty years. The cabbages, those ornamental cabbages, they're huge. I think they should be asked, if they were interested in asking this, you know, this question. How much more water does it take for, because it's like a speed for some plants, but not all plants. Because we, you know, part of Santa Fe is the beautiful plants, the beautiful trees. And I'll talk about another incident about that in a minute, but in the meantime, you know, I have, we bought a property in South Capitol that has ornamental Japanese pears. I don't think it's been two minutes. I think it was the, it was the thing of doing the-
Go ahead, ma'am.
Just a minute, okay, just for a minute.
If you can focus on what you want to say.
The pears, I, I've learned how to make pickles. You open the pear, it's black inside, and you can also see pictures of aspen trees. Aspen trees are very delicate. You can go up to the ski basin, for example, and see rows where they turn black instead of orange, and that's part of what happens with, so this is only one. When I moved into this area, a tree fell on my car and demolished my car. And when this was being talked about, about the fires and things like that, I thought about the AT&amp;T cell tower that's right by the plaza, that has, that they have admitted has far too many antennas on it. If that fell over, imagine what it would do to the city. And it could fall over, because it has much too much on it. So this is enough to tell you to get, have a sleepless night like I have a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Consuelo Luz Arostegua and Jim McClure.
Who's up right now?
Lady of the orange. What's your name, ma'am? Yes, you're next.
Hi, everybody. My name is Janice Simmons. I just want to remind everybody that one day, I woke up, and I lived down the street from Capital High School, and one day I woke up and I saw this really ugly tree that just stuck out of nowhere, and it was a cellphone tower disguised as a Christmas tree or something. And I can't imagine anything to be uglier than that particular tower. And that was voted on, and I want to remind everybody that that was a mistake. But it's the South Side, so nobody cares. If it was the South Capitol, boy, would we hear about it. You know, and it's just getting on my nerves that this, this proposal is going to kind of infiltrate especially areas that are not really considered aesthetically beautiful, like the South Side. You know, we don't, we represent Santa Fe in a way of having super Walmart down the street, and cellphone towers everywhere, and, you know, just like, whatever. It's just not, I want people to consider that this amendment, this proposal will be a mistake, and we will wake up and see a lot of things that we don't want there, and it will be not good for the children, not good for the schools. There's a million schools there, there's a lot of children everywhere, and that radiation is just like, you just keep piling it up and piling it up and piling it up, and it's just going to get to a point where we're going to really regret making decisions like this. The Christmas tree, I could probably live with that a little bit longer, but this proposal, I can't live with it. I, you know, it makes me want to just move out of Santa Fe. It's going to be out of our hands, and I think we're giving a lot of power, taking away power from, from, from the people who live here. I own a house. For me to wake up and see this stuff and not be able to say anything, you know, people are screaming up bloody murder in this country, gun rights, gun rights, gun rights, don't take them away. Well, you're taking away my rights to have a safe neighborhood without these towers everywhere, and I don't like that. Those are my rights, and we all have the same rights. So thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Copriva. Consuelo, you're up at the podium, please.
Can you list the next three from Consuelo, and that way they would know the order.
So Jim McClure is next, then Kevin Copriva, Virginia Miller, and then Kathleen, sorry, Pollock, maybe.
Thank you. Okay, Consuelo. Go ahead and state your name, and-
Consuelo Luz Arostegui. Mayor, councilors, I find this situation outrageous, an abrogation of our rights, but I would like to cede, everything I really want to say has been said already, so I would like to cede my two minutes to Dr. Bill Bruno, because he has some important, more important information to share. Thank you.
Someone asked me to, so, sorry, Bill Bruno again, PhD. Somebody wanted me to tell this, on one of the chat, one of the news, there's been two newspaper, at least, articles about this on the local newspaper websites, and there was some discussion afterwards, and somebody- was some discussion afterwards, and somebody online said that we were all dumb, that there were so many stupid people in Santa Fe who believed that this could be harmful. And I replied by saying, you know, I got my PhD in theoretical physics from Berkeley. My papers have been cited over two thousand times. What do you got? But -- and he didn't reply, which is too bad, you know. I want to know. Maybe he is really smart. So I -- so I -- there was more I wanted to say about Mobiliti. So Mobiliti, so this is the company that wants to do business here. They were fined in Baltimore for digging up the sidewalk without a permit. And they also -- it's not just in New Mexico where they have this deceptive name, Broadband Network of New Mexico. In Illinois, they go by Illinois Utility Poll Authority. And California, it's the same thing, California Utility Poll Authority. And so there's an online trade group magazine that says, you know, "Why else would you pick a name like that?" Asked consultant Steve Blum of Tele's Venture Associates, who assists local governments in negotiations with telecom companies. "The only reason I can think of is that they're trying to slip something past somebody." So, you know, I almost think that the city probably could do really well to hire a consultant like that. They would probably get a lot more return than, you know, as I said earlier, they -- in cities like San Antonio, the companies pay thousands of dollars per poll per year. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's up, Yolanda?
Jim McClure.
My name's Jim McClure. My point has already been covered, so I'll cede my time to Azlan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to -- one thing, I want you to bring my phone number and my email address in case any of you -- I would love to be on the committee, for one thing, and if any of you have any questions.
I would -- do you want to give that to us off-TV rather than stating it now for the broader audience? We'll gladly take it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then I do want to mention some of my history. I worked for pioneers, and I run a 501(c)(3) called Global Relief Resources, which is GUR. So I mean it, I really care about people. And I've been watching this cell tower thing, and I just also want to say it's not just politicians that get offered bribes, also activists do, because I held town hall meetings and then AT&amp;T gave me a free phone, and I was against their cell towers. So, but I would invite you to drive around the cell towers that we have and just notice the quality that's right around them, because I really notice that things get run -- they kind of get rundown, and I don't know if it's that -- I mean, I don't -- I probably wouldn't hang out in that energy field for too long and things might get rundown. So I would just ask you to drive around and look at the area right around the cell towers we already have, and see if you can notice a little bit of a rundown feeling right around the cell towers. Thanks.
Julia...
Azlan White is the name. Thank you. A-Z-L-A-N.
I'm sorry, I can't make out your last name. Julia Lan Martis. No? And then Mitch, you're up.
Mitch is up right now? Come on up, Mitch.
Mitch, you're after.
After. Wait, wait, wait. Who's up at the podium, Yolanda?
Kevin.
Kevin Copriva.
After Kevin, it's Virginia Miller.
Kevin's up.
Kevin Copriva.
All right, you're Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin. Sorry, we're saying a lot of names. Thank you.
Let's see if this works.
It worked.
If we could get a company to come in and give us a bunch of money to set up a bunch of towers that would flood us with smoke, nobody would deny that that's dangerous, right? Cigarette smoking is dangerous. Do we have any cigarette-smoking deniers here? Microwave energy is dangerous for children. And so I'm here because I'm worried that you guys are going to sell us out. I think most of us are worried that you're going to sell us out on this. So that's my statement. Don't sell us out, these things are dangerous. There's plenty of evidence. There are a few people in this room who could just bury you in evidence, so there isn't a problem with the evidence. It's just whether, are you going to sell us out or not? That's what I want to know. It's simple. It's not rocket science. Some people say it's complicated, but it's not. You either sell us out or you protect us. I think your job is to protect us. You look pretty sincere, so protect us, don't sell us out. Thank you.
That was Dr. Copriva.
Good evening, mayor, councilors. I'm Virginia Miller, and I've been concerned about this issue for a long time. I want to emphasize the Telecommunications Act of 1996 where health issues were forbidden to be talked about in relationship to cell towers and antennas. But they did explicitly affirm a city's right to their zoning authority, and that's where you have your power to protect the residents and the property owners in our city, the people in our city. San Francisco prohibited the distributed antenna system, so you could do the same. I also just learned that there are people lobbying in Washington to stop the 5G cellphone technology that was supposed to be nationwide, which requires distributed antenna systems. So hopefully, they can help stop it. But meanwhile, you can support all of us through your zoning authority in the city. And the aesthetics alone, I mean, we care a lot about that here in Santa Fe because visitors like to come here because it's not like a lot of other places. But I worry about it a lot. I have grandchildren, I have great-grandchildren. And it also, I'm concerned about the X-rays and gamma rays that are part of the electromagnetic spectrum, and they do harm the human body. So we need to stop all of this and not continue harming ourselves and our planet. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Perlich. I am a resident of Santa Fe, New Mexico. I am a licensed nurse in the state of New Mexico. I'm a licensed attorney in Washington, DC, and in the state of Pennsylvania. The first thing I wanted to say, with due respect to your attorneys, but city attorneys, regarding ADA accommodation and not turning off the Wi-Fi here, a lot of times, there is something called the letter of the law, and there's something called the spirit of the law. I myself am not what you would call sick, chemically sensitive, or electromagnetically sensitive. However, I've seen untold human suffering, and sometimes, out of compassion, you do for the least of your brethren what you can. So I just throw that out there for thought. The other thing I would say is, as a nurse, I'm sure all of you have heard about EKGs, EEGs. Those are common ordinary tests that we use to test the electromagnetics of the brain and the heart. So in the event that electricity was not part of our bodies, we wouldn't have these standardized tests that conventional medical doctors, you know, go to for information. I certainly respect ancillary medical treatment, certainly understand that there are energy fields, and that the Chinese and so forth have had much to say regarding that for thousands of years. But for those of you who have perhaps a narrower scope of understanding of the human body and health, I would say to you that those are two standard tests that are utilized frequently. I'm concerned about the health implications. I'm concerned about Wi-Fi that confuses the electrical system, okay? I'm concerned about Wi-Fi that burns the cells. You can't send and receive messages. Many, many people suffer, but you don't see them because they can't participate in ordinary human life. So the other thing I would say as an attorney, I'm concerned that we have a lot of discussion regarding this matter, and certainly informed discussion. I wouldn't want any kind of due process for citizens to be violated because people need to know what they're really dealing with, not what if, I would call a facade of what they're dealing with. So I would want representation to tell the community, and certainly, you all are very intelligent people, very capable of handling the research with the many people that have offered to help you. And I guess the gentleman put it the best, and he said, "Don't sell us out." Thank you.
Thank you.
John Mead, Lola Moonfrog, and Vivian. I'm not sure.
Hello. My name is Marjorie Young, and I just want to tell you a little story that I read in The New Yorker twenty or thirty years ago, quite a long time ago. There was a K through five elementary school and an empty lot next to it, and the city of Santa Barbara erected a cellphone tower. After a while, not too long, people began to get sick. First, a teacher got cancer, and I think intestinal cancer, and then another teacher got cancer, and then a kid got cancer. And that people in Santa Barbara started to write to Sacramento, the state capital, and complain. And they sent down their physicists on a weekend, on a Sunday, to check out the area. And with their -- I forget what it's called, those gadgets. And they came back and said, "There's no EMFs here, there's no problems, you don't have to worry about it." But the people of Santa Barbara, it's an affluent city, so they went out and bought their own equipment, and they brought it back, and they tested during the week when the kids were in school, and they found that the EMFs were very high. I don't know the end of the story, but it just shows that there are many years of tradition of, I guess, governmental groups trying to keep this away from the population, and it's many years have passed, so I hope we're way different.
Thank you.
John Mead, you're up. Lola Moonfrog, then Vivian, then Arthur Firstenberg, and Viola Montoya.
You may have to give me instructions with this, but we are Gonzales, and council members, I'm grateful to be here, thank you. My name is Lola Moonfrog. I've lived in Santa Fe since 1981, and New Mexico since 1970. And I came up in a village where I was taught how to thresh frijoles, so I have incredible thrill and respect for the conversation that went on earlier. There's a smokescreen going on about the EMFs, just like there was with tobacco. And I really ask you, do everything you can to prevent this proliferation of the technology. I understand that people want it. I understand that people think that if we don't have it, that their kids are going to be deprived of an education. I have had half a dozen friends show up with brain tumors now. I lost a very beloved friend in March who was an upstanding citizen in this community who had Wi-Fi in his house, which I would turn off when I came to visit with permission. Wi-Fi incredibly in the houses around the neighborhood. I have a meter to check that. His brain tumor that he died from was in exactly the place where he held his cellphone for twenty-eight years. My sister-in-law, who lives in Vermont, had a metastasis of her cancer that occurred right where she holds her cellphone. So this thing is serious about what's coming up with the conditions. I realize many people don't have this. It's kind of hidden. You might not know it. I don't know if any of you have perceived how much people have sort of lost their short-term memories and have gotten scattered. It's a real thing. So I just want to say in Europe, people are paying attention, keeping it out of public spaces, out of churches, out of synagogues, out of schools. And I just ask you, please, find what you can do, whether it's the feasibility thing or causing, you know, calling for more fees, or just outright saying, "We're taking a risk. We're going to say no to this." So I thank you for your attention, and I hope none of you suffer in this way.
Thank you.
John Miffey. No, you're up, Arthur. And then you'll be next, and then Jonathan Cruz.
Arthur Firstenberg. Last night, I read the entire fifty-two-page packet you were given, including what Kelly Brennan and Marcos Martinez told you in committees. I was appalled. Either Ms. Brennan and Mr. Martinez have not read this bill, or they are not telling you the truth. They tell you the city is going to collect a franchise fee from the companies that use our streets. This bill does not do that. The so-called franchise fee is not a franchise fee at all. It's an illegal grocery receipts tax that is going to be added to every citizen -- every city resident's telephone bill. The companies that are awarded franchises aren't going to pay the city anything. Mr. Martinez told you, and I quote, "I was prompted to bring these amendments forward because we have a new telecommunications provider called Broadband Network of New Mexico. They want to get a telecommunications franchise with the city, and we want to be able to charge them for their use and occupancy of the rights of way, and this ordinance will allow us to impose a fee on them," end quote. Mayor, councilors, I suggest you go and read this bill. This bill imposes a tax on all retail sales of telecom services in Santa Fe, and it requires retailers to collect the tax from customers. The tax has nothing to do with the rights of way. Broadband Network of New Mexico is a wholesaler, a vendor, that installs and operates antennas and towers for Sprint. This bill will not allow the city to collect a nickel from them. They are calling this tax a franchise fee when it is actually a grocery receipts tax, and under New Mexico law, as you know, cities cannot impose a grocery receipts tax unless it is approved by a majority vote in an election. This bill is a fraud, and it will be thrown out in court if it is challenged. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Viola Montoya. I live at 30 Piedras Negras in Santa Fe. Not only am I a lifelong citizen, but my family's been here for many, many generations. You would not believe how many generations. We did a DNA test with National Geographic. My family's been here for fifteen thousand years. I have the DNA to prove it. But it gives me a very loyal feeling when I come up here. I feel that I have no choice but to stand up and speak out. Last month, I attended, here in Santa Fe, in this couple buildings away, an International World Congress hosted by Global Foundation for Integrative Medicine. Mayor, you were there, and you welcomed the group, and it was wonderful. There were people, luminaries, scientists, doctors, PhDs from all over the world, and they spoke about the silent killers. These are people who are at the forefront of doing research, and they have found that indeed, just like tobacco, just like lead paint, just like other silent killers, like, you know, things we put in the ground and drink water, whatever. There's a -- we're being bombarded with silent killers, and we're not thinking long term. We're thinking short-term gain, and that's a big mistake. So, in this book, it's called The RF Elephant in the Room. It states a little bit of the research that they've done. I'll just read a quick paragraph here. This was about a woman, Martha Herbert, MD. She's a professor of neural... This was about a woman, Martha Herbert, M.D., she's a professor of neurology at Harvard Medical School, works with pediatrics. In 2013, the Harvard autism expert Martha Herbert published an article indicating that the very same biological changes happening in autism happen with electromagnetic field exposures. And it goes on and on to say how it affects, now autism affects one in 50 school-aged It's up from one in 1,500 in the 1990s. If it continues to grow at this rate, it could be, at this same rate, one in two children by the year 2032. They have linked this directly to EMF. Now, I am not a sufferer of, I'm not sensitive to EMF, it's a controversial thing, we haven't done the research, we don't need to be making long-term decisions without the research.
Thank you, thank you. If you could begin to wind down your comments, your two minutes have passed, ma'am.
I didn't actually read the proposition, I just want to say one more thing. Yes, they're ugly, that's not why I'm here, but, you know, the other day I was on Sarrius Road, and I saw a big tower, and I just thought, first I saw the mountains, and then I looked over, and I saw this tower, and I just thought, "What is happening here? We've got to stop it." I don't suffer from sensitivity, but other people do, and I wouldn't dare to tell someone who has cancer that I'm not going to do the research to help them or provide the necessary things that they need for their good health.
Thank you.
But I have to say one more thing, the thing that repulses me more than how badly they look and how we haven't done the research to know how it affects living organisms, and it does, the thing that appalls me the most is that people don't have a choice, that in the proposition, which I haven't read, it's so repulsive to think that a company like that could come in and have that kind of power.
Thank you.
It's repulsive.
Thank you. Okay, for the remainder of the speakers, try to be as lenient as possible in the two minutes, the council still has other agenda items. If we can just stay as clear and focused as new information to help the council make a decision, I'd appreciate it.
Mayor, members of City Council, I'm John McPhee. I'm 30 years in doing safety regulations and being a policy analyst in that area, as well as historical preservationist. If we have to circum, in order to comply with the Telecommunications Act, if we have to, to forbid this on the basis of aesthetics, I think we have the argument for the city. I mean, this is considered one of the most beautiful cities in the United States. My sister, to give you an example, my family founded six towns in southeastern New Mexico. I finally got my sisters to go see them, they came to see me for a few days, and they were shocked to go down there and find that none of those towns had done the work that you and your forefathers had done to protect this place, protect the historical buildings. They went to Carlsbad, and the only historical building left was my great-grandfather's office. And they're like, "Wow, Santa Fe is different." And then, you know, that's, and it's an enormous amount of income for us, revenue, you know, my wife and I used to be in the gallery business, you know, we, a lot of us depend directly or indirectly on the tourist business, people relocating, real estate values and so forth. I think we have a legitimate argument like San Francisco to reject this basically, just exclusively on aesthetic means. Otherwise, as a regulatory expert, I'm completely befuddled by this continuing debate when all the research has been done, there's been 6,000 studies. The Russians came to Kirtland Air Force Base, not Washington, D.C., in 1952 to tell us about this and warn us about it. We laughed at them because even ionizing radiation was not considered dangerous in the United States then, that's how far behind we are. The Russians have their own whole national committee on protection from non-ionizing radiation, that's how serious they take it. They came to us three years ago and said, "Please, you know, we don't care about you guys necessarily as a nation, but you're killing your children." And they tried to give us 50 years of research, we rejected it because of the liability, because we already knew that it would prove danger. Last week, already with the parallel, the initiation of smartphones in Sweden is exactly parallels now an epidemic of thyroid cancer that started in Sweden, we're going to see it everywhere. It's only a matter of, you know, a year or two before, there's so many cases that'll break. Last week, the Canadian Health Minister came forward and said, "Your wireless devices are harmless." Then in two hours, he was reprimanded by his own parliamentary subcommittee, who said that this contradicts the report that was done by the Canadian Parliament only six months ago. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmen. My name is Jonathan Cruz, and I live at 228 Spruce Street here in Santa Fe. Just want to ask you, how many of you own microwaves, microwave ovens in your homes? So if you do, the next time you cook something, just take note of what it does. I'd like to concede the rest of my time to Michael Blanchin.
My name is Michael Blanchin, and again, I'm speaking on behalf of the Santa Fe Alliance for Public Health and Safety. The City Manager's Office chose not to turn off the Wi-Fi for City Council meetings, and we did make it clear that this discriminates against those with EHS, electromagnetic hypersensitivity. The Access Board, the federal agency devoted to developing guidelines for compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, has made specific recommendations for accommodating people with a recognized disability known as EHS. I'll submit that for the record. How can this kind of informed federal agency determination be so casually dismissed by our city officials? We made it clear to the city that there are individuals in our coalition who have EHS, and that they would be injured by their attendance. Here's the conversation that went between myself and Executive Administrative Assistant in the City Manager's Office today. Myself: "In the past, councilors were on computers, and you had wired connections." Assistant: "Yes, but we no longer use wired connections, we've gone wireless. The councilors are all on iPads." Myself: "Have you looked into the possibility of using wired connections for the iPads?" Assistant: "I'll have to talk with our IT department." And I say, "You do know that an iPad can use a wired connection for connectivity, yes?" Assistant: "I know, but we're going with wireless now." That was the end of the conversation. In only five minutes, I was able to do a simple online search and find the complete instructions and accessories required for an iPad to use a wired connection for connectivity. I'd like to submit that for the record, these easy-to-find documents detailing how a wired connection for an iPad is established and what accessories would be required. This issue is an illustration of how warped our view of things has become, we don't want to be inconvenienced. We'll sacrifice justice and the right of an individual to contribute at a public meeting in exchange for personal convenience. A wheelchair ramp is far more inconvenient and costly than cords and adapters in very special situations. Remember, the Americans with Disabilities Act does not give priority to one disability over another.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members of the, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start off by thanking those of you who agreed to meet with me and listen to my side of the story. Councilor Trujillo, Councilor Harris, Councilor Lindell, Council, Councilor Dominguez, Councilor Villarreal, Councilor Ives, Councilor Rivera, you all took at least a half an hour with me, and I just want to appreciate that that was a significant investment of time. What I'd like to do is, two things, I want to summarize our requests to you. And before I start with that, I have a request for you, Councilor Dominguez. Looking back in the old dusty files, I found a memo that you, among others, had signed off on, requesting the FCC to look into health impacts and to revise the federal law. And I just would like you to take under consideration if you would reintroduce that and see if we couldn't pass that message up once again, and thank you for doing that. I have an issue about Chapter 14. As I understand it, and I'm going to read, which is kind of boring, but the City Attorney's Office has said that we've got land use and zoning restrictions that are effective as it relates to telecom communications. And I want to, I want to review and bring to your attention why I don't think that's totally accurate. The provisions of Section 27-2 shall supersede the provisions of Section 16-6.2 for telecommunication facilities in the public rights-of-way. After Chapter 27 was amended in 2010, Chapter 14-6.2 was also amended to exempt towers and antennas located in the city's public right-of-ways. Chapter 14 requires a separate application for each antenna or tower site. Chapter 27 requires only an application for the franchise. So unlike Chapter 14, the new Chapter 27 does not require a sign to be posted at each site to notify neighbors of the application, and after the franchise is approved, the map of proposed sites can be changed without further notification to anybody except the land use director. And then with regard to historic districts, Chapter 14 requires approval of every site by the H Board, applying historic guidelines contained in Section 14. Chapter 27 supersedes this, it does not allow the H Board to apply its own guidelines. Telecom facilities located within the historic districts shall be reviewed by the Historic Design Review Board for compliance with this subsection. I wonder, Mr. Mayor, could I have a couple more minutes to?
Can you wind down? Mitch, I want to, I know it's late, and we've got to have the council move into this, so if you, how about 30 seconds more, 45?
(mumbling)
Thank you.
One thing that we're asking for is the advisory committee be something that the mayor does, that the mayor does appoint, not shall appoint, an advisory committee. We're asking that that committee put together a telecom plan so that we ensure that we have a siting plan that the city approves of. We ask that you reinstate Chapter 14 so that it's not exempt by Chapter 27. We want to, we, that would allow notice and a hearing for each site, and a lease fee for each site. I think the amendment needs to address the issue of liability insurance required of telecoms. One thing that's not addressed in the, either the old ordinance or the amendment, is proof of compliance with FCC exposure limits. I encourage us to explore ordinance from other cities, which that advisory committee could be helpful with.
Thank you, Mitch. Can we have that paper? That way we make sure we have it? Thank you. Anyone else want to address the commission tonight, the council? Okay, the public hearing has closed. Marcos, if you can come up and, I think there were a number of concerns addressed, it's created a little bit of confusion in my mind, what we're considering tonight, because it seemed for a large portion of the conversation, that the consideration was about cell towers' heights, participation in neighborhoods, without a public process, and I, and I guess I'm wanting to really understand your responses to the concerns. I think someone mentioned that there might be, as a result of this, 500 new cell towers that would be deployed throughout the city. And I'm just interested in really being able to understand what the City Attorney's Office is proposing versus the public comment that was made tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's, the City Attorney's Office is proposing that the City Council reimplement a fee, a fee provision. As I previously stated, this ordinance, as I previously stated, this ordinance amendment does not affect the land review process as it exists in code now. So it's difficult for me to address the prospect or specter of 500 new cellphone towers coming into town under this change, because it wouldn't affect that.
Does it allow for one new cell tower to come in? I mean, I mean, is it, does it allow for just towers to come into the city, the delivery of more Wi-Fi without the public participating in that?
This ordinance change does not, this ordinance amendment does not change how cellphone towers would apply for a franchise and be sited in the city. So this ordinance change doesn't affect what's currently going on.
So is the answer no, then, to that question? Because what I heard continuously is that this ordinance was creating a pathway for cell towers to start moving up throughout the city.
The answer to the question is, it doesn't create a pathway any more than the pathway that already exists.
Prior to this ordinance. So if people were interested in affecting the placement or the delivery of more, or cell towers into the community, is that pathway through the other telecommunications ordinance that's on the books? The one that you're saying, that you referenced earlier, that addresses the issue of the land use code and siting?
Mayor, councilors, I will say that I think Marcos's point is that this ordinance proposes amendments to an existing ordinance, the amendments address a very limited universe of things, the main item being fee. All the other provisions of the ordinance were enacted in 2010 and are in effect, and were largely supported by the court. The fee provision of this ordinance was struck by the court, which is why we need to replace it. So this is the fee.
Let me just, maybe I'll reframe the question. To address the concerns that were brought up by an overwhelmed majority of the public tonight, are these amendments that being considered the way to address the issue, or is it through the ordinance, the overall ordinance, that this is amending?
The overall ordinance that this is amending.
So for what's being considered tonight, these amendments, the council could not, if we want, if the council wanted to be responsive tonight to public testimony regarding the concerns over cell towers and their presence in the community, this, what's, what this consideration tonight does not do that. It would have to be the bigger ordinance that this amends that would address that issue.
That's correct, Mayor.
All right, we're going to leave, members of the governing body, any questions? Okay, what's the, how's your, Councilor Dominguez?
A question, Mayor, only because I'm curious. Well, first of all, just let me say that I wanted to thank the public for coming out and speaking to this. This isn't the first time that I've been a part of these kinds of conversations, and just like I thanked you all back then, I thank you now, and that's part of what makes Santa Fe so interesting and great, is the conversations that we have with our public. So, you know, the two issues that I heard mostly were health and aesthetics. This bill does not speak to either the health or the aesthetics of the telecoms bill in general, but there is, there was a discussion about money. And if I read your memo correctly, there's language that talks about charging a reasonable fee. And how we define reasonable, I think, is the, at least for me, part of the question. Because there's an insinuation out there that, you know, that really you're lying to us, or that you're not telling us the entire truth in relation to how it pertains to a GRT, and a tax on retail. And also this, you know, this other idea that we can just kind of make the fee so large that, you know, it would prohibit the kind of use that really I don't think anyone wants, we don't think anyone's interested in harming people purposely, but there's some guidelines and frameworks that we have to take into consideration. So talk to me about that a little bit, and this idea that we basically are mandated to charge a reasonable fee, right?
Well, we're not mandated under federal law to charge a reasonable fee, although there is a anti-donation question that would arise if we attempted to charge no fee. In other words, if we let a telecom provider use the public rights-of-way, in a way, the city would be providing a subsidy to that private entity, allowing it to use a public resource without paying for it, whereas we charge other entities rent. The reasonableness of the fee was the, one of the key questions in the prior litigation. Quest challenged the previous fee and free structure as being mass, a mass- Quest challenged the previous fee and fee structure as being mass, a massive increase in costs to them and therefore effectively prohibiting telecommunications services.
Let me stop you right there. So essentially, we did have a fee that was high. And we fought that. I mean, city staff spent a lot of time and energy and this governing body has as well. And the courts basically came back and said, what?
They said the, the fee was prohibitively high and it effectively prohibited telecommunications services and therefore it was invalid. That's why the fee was struck.
And that is from what, the Court of Appeals or the First Judicial District Court?
It was the Federal District Court of New Mexico.
Okay, okay, so that's, okay. Because, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff in here and, you know, Court of Appeals and the federal case and all this other stuff. And so, well, talk to me a little bit though about the difference between a franchise fee and I guess this idea that it's a GRT tax on retail. I'm not sure if I got the language correctly, but that's kind of what I heard.
Yeah. This is actually another question, a question that Quest challenged the city on. They alleged that the franchise fee was in fact a disguised tax. They made raids to that claim in state court and the city prevailed. The court held that the franchise fee is not a disguised tax. It is a franchise fee under New Mexico law. And so that basically settled that question. Ultimately, Quest appealed that to the Court of Appeals and as part of the global settlement, they withdrew the appeal.
Meaning?
Meaning it didn't continue to the Court of Appeals. They let the question of a fee versus tax and agreed not to challenge the franchise fee as a tax in the future again.
Now, what are, what, so, I mean, I think it's fair to say that the city of Santa Fe has done things like try to, I don't know if prohibit is the right word, but try to severely regulate by, you know, having a, a large impact fee or a large, I'm sorry.
Franchise fee.
Franchise fee, right. And so what happens if we don't comply? What happens if we do not, you know, basically follow the law that has been handed down to us?
Basically, a telecommunications provider would seek an injunction against the city. They would request equitable relief under these, the Telecommunications Act, and they would be granted basically the right to occupy the public rights of way.
And so, not that, there's not a, a desire, at least to some degree, not to comply with federal law. But that aside, where does the money come from if that happens, Kelly? I mean, we have insurance, is it like a general fund?
Mayor, councilors, Councilor Dominguez, we were fortunate and in a, an unfortunate way, I would say, to have a civil rights claim in our lawsuit and thus it triggered some, some insurance coverage. So we had some insurance assistance, but eventually that was dropped as that claim was dismissed and it was funded, in fact, out of our general revenues.
So if we don't comply with the law and we, I don't know, like imagine that there might be some fee that we would have to pay.
I, well, I, I think the litigation can be very expensive over time. We litigated this case for several years. I think that one of the things I've heard is the, we cannot prohibit or effectively prohibit. So we can't say outright, you cannot do this in this city. And we can't do things that effectively do, accomplish the same purpose, like setting a very high fee or setting standards that no one can meet. That would be effective prohibition. So we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to avoid the massive increase test that we failed in the last case. And, and we've done computations around this number. And as Marcos points out, the other issue, of course, is that we need to charge for the use of public facilities in order not to violate the anti-donation clause of the Constitution.
So ultimately, what, what you're saying is that by not complying, we probably get sued and our general fund will have to pay for the litigation of that. I mean, for the, the services that someone would provide us to defend us, I guess.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Villarreal, and then Councilor Harris.
Most of the questions I had, Councilor Dominguez just asked. I think he was looking at my notes because there was three or four that you already mentioned. But the one that you mentioned, but we didn't get an answer, was I wanted to understand what, I think Julia brought up about leases, what, the difference between lease fees and versus franchise fees, if you could explain that and what happened to the use of the lease option?
Thank you, Councilor Villarreal. In nineteen ninety-eight, after the nineteen ninety, the passage of the nineteen ninety-six Telecommunications Act, the city enacted a lease scheme. Quest, at that time, also challenged the leasing scheme in federal court, where the leasing scheme was overturned. Part of the basis of that was the massive fee increase that the lease scheme, the leasing scheme imposed on Quest. Nonetheless, the court was fairly clear that the leasing scheme could not survive. And they explicitly severed and enjoined those sections of the code and the Tenth Circuit upheld that as well.
Okay, and then the other, let's see, you got the fee restriction question I had. There was a question about what is the city's, what is our zoning authority power for this particular issue or around telecommunications?
Yeah, well, the Telecommunications Act created a tension between localities and the federal government's regulation of telecommunications.
The federal.
The nineteen ninety-six act, the purpose of it was to promote increased competition and delivery of telecommunications throughout the United States. At the same time, they tried in a couple areas to preserve some local zoning authority, but the local zoning, zoning authority was always circumscribed by that general federal law. So while the city can take aesthetics into consideration, as Kelly pointed out, those aesthetic considerations cannot have the effect of prohibiting telecommunications services.
So essentially, I think what I'm hearing from, on all sides, is that our federal telecom, telecommunications act really is the, it trumps a lot of what we think we could do locally, and that's the most frustrating part. And I'm sure for all of you too. And I guess what I'm just always curious is maybe if we look at that side, I mean, as a public, as a community, or all of you that are very active, that if you ever thought about the federal side of things, of changing the federal law versus a lot of what we can't necessarily change here, or we're very, we're, our hands are tied in a lot of cases. So it's frustrating and I'm sure it's frustrating for our legal staff too. So I, I'm going to yield the floor right now for other comments.
Councilor Harris, then, Councilor Mestes, Councilor Lindell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there's a, there's a lot to consider on this and perhaps we have some, we definitely have some limitations given federal statute. But I guess one thing that I, I am pretty clear on is I think that no matter what happens, we should not make the proposed committee optional. I think there, I think there's enough to talk about here, both now and, and it's talked about years past and probably will be talked about years in the future. And I think it would be appropriate and necessary to really make sure that we establish that committee. So I wanted to start off by saying that. But, you know, there's, I have a lot of questions about this. You know, liability issues. You've heard me say time and time again, I'm always looking at certificates of insurance, professional liability coverage and those types of things. And I'm wondering if, if you, Mr. Martinez, or anybody else has, has had any kind of discussion with our carrier, Gallagher, about this issue? I'm curious if we have any kind of exclusions in our policy that really kind of basically expose the city to some liability that we're, we, you know, that is not, you know, I'm thinking about, you know, environmental, you know, you would see a lot of commercial general liability policies that may have environmental, you know, exclusions to environmental claims. And so I'm wondering if, again, the city attorney's office or our risk management people, but really, city attorney's office has had any kind of discussion with our carrier on this?
Mayor, councilors, Councilor Harris, I can say to the best of my knowledge, no in that direct sense of the question. I think that we, as I recall through the application process, require some standard insurances. I'm not sure that we could ask providers to insure against a health risk when we are told we cannot consider health risk, as was suggested by a gentleman this evening. Again, and, or establishing a high limit of insurance on a potential risk that has been defined by the regulator as not existing would, I think, be effectively prohibitive. I understand what you're saying and I think we, as a matter of course, typically require insurance. As I say, I believe we were intending to handle that through the application process.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's identified, I haven't looked at it during the discussion, but it's relatively low. I mean, it's kind of standard coverage, a million, you know, those types of things. I didn't see any kind of umbrella. But my, did you answer my question, no, about, has there any been, been any discussion with Gallagher about this situation? I mean, this is a national firm, they're covering municipalities throughout our country. And I would think that they might have some insight on this.
We, we can certainly make an inquiry, but as I say, this, I, I said no because I can't speak to that in the context of anything I've looked at recently or say that someone hasn't done it. We can certainly look into it and make that inquiry.
I think that would be important. And what about the FCC exposure limits? I mean, is that, we often look at kind of how to quantify things, you know, so much of what we're, we're talking about is subjective considerations. I always like to quantify it if possible, but can you speak to, are there in fact FCC exposure limits?
Yes.
Councilor Harris, yes, to answer that question.
Do we know what they are?
I, I don't know what they are off the top of my head. There's actually several, there's numerous regulations that deal with the exposure limits for radio frequency emissions. Those exposure limits depend on the type of device and it, and all of its engineering specifications and whether it's fixed or mobile, whether it can be moved easily or not. So there are, there are different exposure limits that are defined by those.
You know, I, I would think that, you know, when we have the discussion with Gallagher, you know, if in fact they provide some level of coverage on situations like this, they would tie that to the, you know, the municipality's compliance with FCC exposure limits. So that's another thing that I think we should have some understanding of.
I think, Councilor, on, in the background memo, and there's some discussion of it in the letter from the FCC that we received in response to our passage of the last ordinance when a resolution was passed. The FCC relies upon a panel of scientists and medical experts from the American National Standards Institute, ANSI, and the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers, IEE, for its expertise in the development of safety standards, recommendations and guidelines for exposure to radio frequency and microwave energy. And I believe, based on my understanding, I tend to look at the World Health Organization, which amalgamates a lot of this information and has an RF project, that while standards among nationalities are somewhat different, in the United States, the standard they have adopted is considered to be relatively conservative in terms of how the risk is evaluated.
Conservative in the sense that it's...
Meaning that they, they leave, in, in their view, plenty of room for error.
It's relatively low bar.
Yeah. Well, now I think we're confusing the...
No, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is, this is our time.
Actually, no, I'm sorry. Ma'am, we have to conclude the, the council delegate, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay, so low bar is not the appropriate characterization. So, Mr. Martinez, you know, you, in your memo and then in your answer on the, kind of the scenario, if we didn't adopt the ordinance, that, and I don't have the whole, all of your language, but you talked about an injunction, basically that would allow the providers to install. But wouldn't, wouldn't our current chapter fourteen regulations have authority in terms of what they could install? They would still have authority, wouldn't they?
Mayor, councilors, Councilor Harris, facilities in the public rights of way are specifically excluded under the chapter fourteen telecommunications provisions, which govern facilities on private land or city-owned land other than public rights of way like parks. So that exclusion kicks the regulation back to chapter twenty-seven, which does have a number of processes and standards for, that are zoning, land use related. So it has its own categories of coverage, yeah. And those are existing in the ordinance now.
Those are existing now.
Correct.
You know, again, in the scenario that Mr. Martinez described, those, those requirements would still be in place.
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to defer here a little bit and let others talk, but I do think that there's a lot of issues here. I think you could, you know, you know, the whole health issue, we know, is not to be a criteria. I think that it's going to be argued for a long time to come. It'd be great if it was settled, but I do think we need to be a little bit more specific on exposure limits. I think aesthetics are an issue that need to be considered. I feel that, you know, again, we've talked about the, you know, our overlay for our historic district, I think we would find it very difficult to have any towers there. I think we would end up with, you know, the towers that would provide as good a coverage as possible, I think, would mostly be found, quite frankly, in district four and district three. And that's just my gut sense of things. So, you know, and the aesthetics, I mean, are they, are they, you know, we've seen new poles, we've seen some on top of, of light standards. You know, it's just, we don't really know really how many towers potentially we're looking at. I mean, there's just a lot of questions regarding the aesthetics that bother me.
Mayor, councilors, Councilor Harris, I can say that the public rights of way may not be the most attractive part of the city when it comes to aesthetic considerations, being already loaded with poles and electrical facilities and things like that. What I would say is, as I recall, the existing standards create, for instance, a preference for co-locating, so you would be required to use an existing pole before you put in a new one. It requires planning commission and historic board approval for certain installations in numbers and routes. It has height requirements. It favors low visual impact. And all these decisions would be viewed in much the same way the planning commissioner, the H Board, or staff and administrative things approves things as they come.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll...
Can we, can I just ask the council real quick? Our rules require us, prior to eleven-thirty, to be able to, to waive the requirement to conclude, I believe.
Suspend the rule.
To suspend the rules. We've got one more item tonight, there's only, after this bill, there's only this... bill, there's only this meeting in November and one meeting in December where we have a full agenda already. Can, can I ask for a suspension of the rules before we go on, so we can finish tonight? Do we need a roll call or a vote?
It's a voice vote.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Councilor Mastas.
Thanks, Marcos, and thank all of you for staying so long and, and providing your very passionate, insightful, I think, comments regarding this legislation, but I want to maybe focus, like, on the immediacy of this issue. Obviously, you know, it's incumbent upon us not to obstruct, you know, any kind of requests for these interstate carriers to provide these services in our public rights of way. We have the opportunity to impose a fee. Do we have any applications that are pending in which we would like to assess a fee?
Yes, as several members of the public have noted, Broadband Networks of New Mexico has approached the city and completed an application with the city requesting a franchise. This ordinance doesn't grant a franchise to Broadband Network of New Mexico, it just creates the fee. So in, the next step would be for Broadband Network of New Mexico to have a specific ordinance granting them a franchise.
So, does this have any retro activity to existing facilities in the right-of-way?
No.
No, so this is just from this point forward?
That's correct.
So what's this, what's the situation of existing infrastructure in the right-of-way? Are they using our right-of-way for free, or what's their disposition, what's their status?
Well, I guess the most prominent example is Quest Century Link, the entity that sued the city twice. They have a grandfathered franchise that is basically a continuation of the 1975 franchise between Mountain Bell and the City of Santa Fe. And as part of the settlement, they basically are continuing under that franchise until, I think...
2020.
2020.
And there, there, there is a general requirement in the existing ordinance that if you are in the right-of-way, you are required to have a franchise. So if there is someone there without a franchise, they are definitely required to get one. And there may be others. I think that we, we would like to do a survey and get a better sense of them.
So, so if there's grandfathered infrastructure that already exists in the right-of-way, they're not subject to the fee provision, so if anyone tries to come and maybe augment that physical infrastructure, a new provider, but use Quests, are we at the mercy of Quest approving that, that provider to augment their physical infrastructure in our right-of-way?
I think if you're asking whether the, we would allow someone to build off of Quest's infrastructure, we would require a franchise for any extensions they make from, from Quest's infrastructure. And in almost all instances, as I understand it, they will be connecting to, to Quest, at least in their central office.
But does Quest have any discretion to say, no, we're not going to allow you to use our existing physical infrastructure? You'd have to find a new location, a new pole.
Quest is required under, I forget what section of the Telecommunications Act, to lease its space to other providers.
But a new location can be considered, right?
Yes. Or if they want, if a new entity wants to lay parallel lines to the Quest lines, they could obtain a franchise from the city and do so.
So as a local government, if somebody, if we have a new provider and they can't find maybe a viable location to install their infrastructure on existing infrastructure, and they propose a new location, we as a community can rebut that? We can say, hey, wait a second, here's a viable location using existing infrastructure in the right-of-way as opposed to a new location? Is that within our realm of authority?
The application process to the Land Use Department, in some ways, contemplates the question you're asking. One of the questions is that the applicant claimed that there's a gap in coverage, and so they have to basically demonstrate that there's some kind of gap in coverage, that this new infrastructure would basically alleviate. So it's not a means to, again, deny or prohibit telecommunications services in the City of Santa Fe, but it is a way of looking at whether this is really as necessary or not to have a new tower here or not, because as Kelly pointed out, we do favor co-locations.
Now, I, I did see something in the Telecom Act that, in these instances, that the National Environmental Policy Act applies to these, these installations. Obviously, you know, it's a privately funded, probably venture, but is that one of the conditions that's imposed on a, on a proprietary company, a telecom company, that they have to follow the Federal National Environmental Policy Act or, or not?
Mayor, councilors, Councilwoman Mastas, I don't believe so. I believe that would be triggered like Section 106, which regulates historic by an infusion of federal funds of a certain type.
Alternatively, if they were passing through federal lands or needing an easement through some kind of federally owned or managed land, that would trigger NEPA, a NEPA analysis.
Can we require them to disclose their RF emissions, any new applicants, if they do want to locate in our public right-of-way? Is that something we can compel them to provide as a condition to, to the application?
I'd have to look into that question. It may be possible to request it as part of the application process. I know that there are some cities in California that were trying to require exposure information by cellphone providers. And I know that that, those regulations were challenged, and I don't, I just haven't followed up on what the outcome of all those legal challenges was, whether it was compelled speech or not under the First Amendment, so...
Excuse me. I could add to that, that we have asked and for a certification of FCC compliance, just as a, a safety measure for ourselves.
That their emissions are within those regulated limits?
Correct. That they are compliant with FCC standards applicable to the installation.
Well, I, you know, I realize we're really focusing on the fee here, and I understand that, but it seems that we're getting a lot of feedback that really is going to force us, I think, to take a more holistic view at our entire regulatory framework, what limited regulatory framework we have in accommodating infrastructure in a public right-of-way for telecommunications services. My last, I guess my last comment is, we really don't have a methodology to assess the fee. I think we mentioned fair market value. So Marcos, Marcos, in your opinion, I mean, can we really assess the fee without really designating it in the ordinance, or do we have a methodology to calculate it? Obviously, it's going to depend on each and every, you know, installation, right? So maybe can, do we have a distinct methodology and fee structure here? Do we intend to charge?
Go ahead.
And, no, we don't have a specific methodology. What we did was, we looked at the list of telecommunications services that are covered by the model ordinance, and we asked a consultant we had to basically estimate what he thought the impact would be on Quest if we imposed this ordinance, this fee structure on Quest, because we knew the increase that Quest had alleged had been prohibited. So we wanted to stay under that increased amount. And with the information we gained in that lawsuit about what services they offered and how they would be covered by this ordinance, we knew then that we were under the threshold of a massive increase, as Quest had alleged. So we basically worked backwards to make sure that the fee would not trigger this massive increase argument that Quest had previously made against the city. But you were correct in stating that for each telecom provider, the, the amount of revenue will be different.
But the fee will be the same.
And I see that there's kind of an audit component here for those providers that would be paying the fee, but do we have a mechanism to audit Quest in terms of, you know, gauging their expenses? Because the fee structure is based on their snapshot of business income, and it's kind of setting parameters in terms of what we can charge in the fee, but can we get that authority to audit Quest as we go along to revisit the fee?
The, and Marcos can add to this, we do have an audit right. We did not, the new audit right is more robust and was actually a matter of contention in the lawsuit on which we prevailed. We extended the statute of limitations for six years instead of three or two, which they had argued for. The, I can't tell you how many thousands and thousands of pages of data we looked at relating to the extremely complex pricing methodologies of telecommunications companies. And our consultant was a specialist in this. And we, in fact, modeled this with him to come to this formula. So in terms of looking at a site and charging a value for a site, in fact, that was sort of the lease scheme, separate appraisal scenario that the court overturned in 2002, in the 1998 iteration of the ordinance.
Okay, that, that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you, Marcos.
Counselor Lindell, then Counselor Ives.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Marcos. Just one quick question. On page, I heard someone ask about this tonight, and I did discuss this earlier with someone, on page 14 of the Ordinance 25 packet, talking about fees upon retailers. And that was brought up tonight. Can you just address that briefly?
Yes, this, our, the city's concern over the resale process is basically a response to one of the allegations that Quest made, that when they resold their telecommunications services to another entity, and that entity had to pay telecommunications franchise fee as well, that there was, in effect, a double taxation. So the purpose of this retailer provision and, is to try to capture the, the entity that is actually providing the service to the end user within the City of Santa Fe. So there's a lot of language that attempts to not do or affect a double taxation on someone that's reselling its services to someone else. There was talk tonight that Mobile Lite or Broadband Networks of New Mexico is going to be reselling to Sprint. We require entities who are reselling their services to give us a list of the contracts with whom they're reselling their services to, and those entities then have to get a franchise with the city. We're just trying to ensure that everyone is paying for their use and occupancy of the rights of way.
Thank you for clarifying that, and thank you for trying to double up on the taxing.
Counselor Ives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, as other councilors have, would obviously like to thank everybody who has not only come down tonight, but who has been participating in the discussion of these issues over the last number of weeks. It is certainly clear, I think, to everybody up here, and I hope it's clear to everybody sitting out there or watching on TV, that the issue of the, and the importance of electromagnetic radiation is a significant one. And I would certainly assert that nobody sitting up here has any intent but to ensure the health and safety of the citizens of Santa Fe. We've talked a lot about those issues, but again, as, certainly as I have stated my intent in bringing this measure forward, it was to address the fee provision and to try to ensure that companies that might be using the public rights of way are required to pay for the use of city property, which in my estimation is fair, reasonable, and indeed dictated under the law to avoid anti-donation provision, issues of folks using public property without compensation to the agency that has jurisdiction over that property. And I know too, that there are those that will continue to disagree with that expressed intent of mine in bringing forward this measure, but you've certainly heard a cogent and clear statement of that by the city attorney's office. And so I hope people can understand and accept that that is the intent, that is the effect of this measure. The issues beyond this fee, again, as I say, are obviously of significance to all of us. So what I will do, and it's not this measure, but I will sponsor a resolution at our next city council meeting, directing the city manager to review our land use and other code, to evaluate whether we are exercising all of our rights as a city over the location, aesthetics, and other factors associated with the construction and siting of telecommunications facilities in the city. And in that, take on more directly this issue of what powers we do have to exercise dominion and control over these facilities in, in the City of Santa Fe, because I agree certainly that that is a significant issue. And as you've heard tonight, it's one in which, in many ways, our city's hands are tied by, in particular, federal law, which both prohibits us from prohibiting folks from being able to provide such services within our city, and also prohibits us from considering the health effects in the decisions we make, assuming that they are in compliance with the safety requirements under federal law. So, again, I think that's a reasonable way to address the issue that many people have raised here, and certainly there, the law is a continuing, continuing in its development in all facets relating to this and many other issues. And so I think conducting that type of review probably makes sense, and it would behoove us to, to do that, to make sure we're doing all we can in that regard. Well... And I just want to assure people that, you know, we're not, nobody's trying to get away with anything. Nobody's trying to, you know, hop in bed with the various companies in terms of these services. It's a very complex area of the law, which requires a great many balancing acts. And I take my hands off, quite frankly, to Marcos and Kelly, our city, and our city attorney staff, who have been walking those fine lines for many, many years, and again, have worked to bring this measure forward to correct what was rejected by the court the last time that we looked at this ordinance. So it behooves us to solve that problem, which is what this measure is designed to do, focusing on the fees. And by all means, we can have a broader discussion on the issue of whether or not we are doing the most we can to try and ensure that we have the greatest impact on such facilities across the City of Santa Fe. Again, you've heard the testimony that says, we do exercise many current means to try and have impact on that, but happy to look at that, to try and make sure we actually are doing the most that we can. So with that, I would move to approve the measure before us.
All right, is there a second?
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, quick question. Marcos, on the, on the caption for this, the issue of the rights of way, and I know that the focus here was to develop a fee that certainly met whatever definition that the court provided or the guidance. But I'm wondering, in, in some of the existing case law, or in the act itself, when discussing rights of way and the use of rights of way by telecommunications companies, does the city have the ability to identify and to limit the amount of telecommunications towers, telecommunications towers actually in city rights aways, right? So if we determine through some public process that there would be a half a dozen towers, let's say, and limited to that, and, or that's all we would make the, the rights way available for, could we limit it? Or do the, under federal law, do the telecommunications companies have the right to, to place a tower on any right of way? And we, we're just trying to figure out how to make sure that they pay their, the public money for it.
Mayor, I'll, I'll take a stab at this and let Marcos make any necessary additions. I, I think what you're suggesting would conceivably be deemed to be effectively prohibitive because it would not have any relationship to the ability to provide telecommunications services, which, you know, if we said six and someone actually needed 10 to provide services, they could say we were effectively prohibiting it by setting a random number. However, we do have these approval processes and standards that can be used rationally to, to regulate within our zoning power.
Let me just challenge you on that point real quick, because if we said six and, and the telecom industry said the demand is 12 and you have to provide it 12 towers for us, couldn't the other six have to come in the form of them identifying private property that would require them to go through, basically, the telecom ordinance that, that would address the issue? Because if we're, if we're just focused on public rights ways and earning a fee, how far can we go in limiting and regulating height and location when it comes to public rights, rights of ways, as if we were a private property owner?
We, we do, in fact, those are, those are some of the kinds of regulations that are embodied in the existing ordinance. In other words, height is limited and you would have to, and, so I'm, for instance, towers like a lattice tower or a guide tower would not be permitted under our ordinance in the rights of way. That's already included. So we'd be talking about monopoles, the monopoles would be limited to a certain height, but before someone could even erect a monopole, they would be required to locate on another kind of pole or a traffic light or a light pole or something like that. That's a co-location requirement, it's embodied in federal law. And if they needed to construct a new pole, they would have to show that they needed it, and it would be limited as to height, they might be required to mask it in some way. So, all of those things are potential tools that the city has to meet the standard without wandering into effective prohibition territory.
But it, but it seems to me that, if we followed your, your train of thought, that, that the telecommunications order, ordinance, or the telecommunications laws, the federal laws, would basically give the telecommunications industry the power of eminent domain, in theory, in being able to, to push towers into the public sphere on rights of ways, regardless of, of the city's ordinances that address the issue of aesthetics, placement. I could see if we said, "We're going to ban them altogether," them arguing the prohibition, but if we were proactive in setting placement and limiting and going further restricted than what would be in the private sector, why, I guess, why would they still get it?
It's a very, it's a very fine line. And in fact, it's something we've tried to walk in the controls that are in the existing ordinance. And it, it may help if we make a informational presentation to you about what those are.
Yeah, and maybe in Councilor Ives, in his resolution, it could be broad enough to address that issue. Because I do think, we're, we're talking not so much about the broader city here, we're talking about the city's rights of way. The fiduciary responsibility we have both to make sure we earn a fee, but also don't expose the city to any unnecessary libel, liability for not being compliant with the federal telecommunications law. However, to, to basically, in effect, say, "All right, we have this ordinance, so you can basically have your pick of rights of ways and, and where you want to place," I think is, is the, is the fear I'm sensing from the public in many respects tonight about, you've just opened up a pathway to putting lots of, of monopoles on rights of ways all over the city, and there's hundreds of miles of rights of ways throughout the city.
The, in fact, in some respects, that's exactly what the federal government is doing because the federal government is oriented now to facilitating broadband and access in, in, for a number of reasons, and, and has poured a certain amount of money into it in order to connect communities that have not been connected before as, as the world changes. And that's a stated goal, and, and it includes a security goal, of course. And just as happened with the telegraph and with the telephone, the rights of way are a way that, that companies to, to expand quickly don't have to deal individually with individual property owners. So it was seen as a way of facilitating communications.
I think you're right in terms of an informational session, session, 2010, you know, there's a lot that's happened since. It's an opportunity to do a refresh on, on what's happened, the state of, of where the industry is, but, but I do think being able to exert and to demonstrate the will of, of the public that we represent by more regulatory oversight of the public rights of ways that address the issues of aesthetics and impact on the health is something to consider. So, all right, we got to move to, to roll call because we're meeting at midnight. I didn't see any questions over here, but, all right, go Dallas.
Real quick, Kelly, I mean, I, the question that I have, and I'm not picking on you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
But pertaining, because you guys made a comment that I guess telecommunications can put parallel to another station, I guess, another pole? Okay, I'm, I'm just using a collocate, collocate, I guess, what you, you had said earlier.
There would be a requirement that they would have to collocate before they.
But, but I'm just, I'm, like I said, I'm not picking on you or anything, I'm just saying, Surrius Road, say.
You're not picking on me.
I'm not picking on you, but I'm, no, no, but, but I'm just saying, and, and I'm just, well, I'm not picking on you, just, just so you know, it isn't that, directly across the Santa Fe Indian School. What, what if a telecommunications was to come down Surrius Road, our right of way, but yet they put one of those poles, say, on the Santa Fe Indian School? Would we still be able to get that franchise fee? Because it's now longer.
Indian School property.
On Indian School property, yeah, that's.
No, the franchise fee is only for the public rights of way.
So.
Facilities in the public rights of way.
I'm just saying, so that's an example, so if they were to put one on there, we would not, okay.
Counselor Treehill, I thought where you were going on that, though, on the monopoles, there is only a certain amount of, there's only a certain amount of carriers that you can put on, which, if that's met, the issue of.
Yeah, that's what I said, when you said multiple and parallel, that's what I wanted to know.
Public rights of way is the issue that I think the concern is, right? So if you max out on one pole, do they get to automatically put up another one?
Shoot one across, yeah.
Because there's a, there's a demand that exists.
And if they found that, if they found that more suitable, I'm just saying, you know, that, meaning that it's not city, it's now.
And private property, that would be a private installation that would be regulated under our land use code.
Not on the Indian School property.
But we wouldn't get the.
Well, Indian, Indian School property, there's a sovereignty issue.
All right, that, that was the question I had, but, you know, I too want to thank all the public for coming, and, you know, like Carmichael said, we've been going through this since, I think, 2006. And one person who I can always say is, you know, he, he doesn't deviate from it, is Mr. Firstenberg. You know, I, I do have a lot of respect for you, sir, because it doesn't matter what district it's in, because I remember when they were putting the one in BIOS in my district, hardly anybody showed up to discuss it, but yet you were still, you were there, you know, so I have a lot of respect for you because you've always stuck with this. We may not always agree, but I do have respect for you because it doesn't matter if it's in District 1, 2, 3, or 4, you've been consistent, and I give my hats off to you on that. But, you know, like with anything in this community, it's future, I mean, you know, and it's unfortunate. People want their 4G, you know, people want their 5G now that that's coming up. I mean, you know, we here in the council chambers, we use our, our computers. I mean, it's, it's something, it's technology, nobody can deny it. You know, there's a lot of ifs and, you know, still out there with cell phones and, you know, these things won't be known, I think, for decades, you know? I have a problem with e-cigarettes, you know, so I, I'm waiting to see what, in 20 years, what that comes up with, so, you know, it's something that I think we need, you know, that we need to do. I do support you, Counselor, on this thing. I think we do need to get some, something out of it, so, that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
And Counselor Treehill, was there one more? Counselor Harris, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, I just want to propose some modifications to the, to the ordinance, and it's really the last paragraph, last section dealing with appointment of telecommunications advisory committee. I'm proposing that we read as follows. "The mayor shall solicit and appoint, with the advice and consent of the city council, a committee of no less than five and no more than nine individuals with appropriate expertise," I'm adding that, "who shall advise, consult, and work with city staff and the public." You know, I, I don't even know what the Santa Fe complex is, to tell you the truth, so I'm, I'm proposing to strike that. "In order to develop a telecommunications protocol and present such protocol to the governing body for its review and approval, and to make recommendations to the governing body regarding amendments to Section 27-2, in order to facilitate implementations of the approved protocol." So.
Counselor Ives, do you agree?
I would love, before going back to that, to have the assessment done internally and then have a discussion with everybody, not just limiting it to members of an advisory group. I think we see how many folks are interested in weighing in on those issues. So, I'm inclined to follow the pathway of asking for that review and then bringing that forward for a broad public discussion, and possibly doing a public listening session so that we can invite the entire community in to talk about those issues. And maybe we get back to the position of reinstituting the commission, but I'd love to have that sort of broader discussion across the community before going back to that structure. So, I would, I would say it, it's not that it's not friendly, it's just, in my mind, not the right time, given where I hope we can go with this, so.
Well, I mean, I, I won't belabor the point, I won't belabor the point, I think there's reasons for going ahead and put it in place now, but we'll put it to a vote.
So, so is that an amendment that you want to propose? Because it's not.
Yeah, I'm proposing an amendment, and.
All right. Is there a second? And we'll consider the amendment?
Second.
So the amendment would be to add, which I, I know Counselor Ives, it didn't get the, I, I got more the sense it was, you're, you're not opposed to it, the issue is an issue of timing and when it's brought to the forefront, but the amendment is about, about making sure that there is an appointment of a telecom advisory committee that will advise the council and the staff on how to address these issues, right? So, all right, so on the amendment itself.
Mayor, so basically, adding language in there that just basically says that the appropriate time might be, might suffice. In other words, it's codified that we're going to create it, but when they actually kick off.
Right.
You know, is really dependent on the conversations that we have with the public and the information that we gather.
That, that's exactly right, Counselor Dominguez. You know, I, I think that what I heard from Counselor Ives regarding a proposed resolution was next, the next session, going to move fairly quickly on that. I think that'll be on a faster track than the formation of the committee. I have to believe that, you know, this, you know, we have some strong voices that we've heard tonight, you've all heard them in the past before, I think we'll hear them again in the future. So I do think we need to go ahead and make the commitment to have the advisory committee. I think it's going to be important, and I don't think it'll get in the way of, of what you're proposing, Counselor Ives, and what you spoke to, Mayor, which I thought were entirely appropriate. I reread the FCC letter, we can deal with aesthetics and other safety concerns, I think we should be doing that, you know, and I'd like to more detail about what Chapters 27 allows or requires by way of those considerations. And so, I think it's, I think that, that we should, really should adopt the advisory committee, get that started, but we're going to be working on this other well before the committee's in place, quite frankly.
Well, I think you still have the floor, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I, I, just to not, you know, make it more complicated, but it might be just as simple as, instead of going through a whole separate motion, amending the motion to accept his language with, you know, another piece that says, you know, at the appropriate time, that it's, you know, it's enacted at the appropriate time.
Perfectly fine by me.
All right, so will you withdraw your amendment, Counselor? Harris? Will you withdraw your amendment, then? Because he's, you can withdraw your amendment, then, and supported that amended?
Yes.
All right.
Accept it as a friendly amendment.
All right. Counselor Mayestas, do you have a question?
No, I just thought, I wasn't comfortable with all the language, or, you know, trying to constitute this advisory committee right now by mentioning protocols. I was just going to suggest, change the language from "may" to "shall," and, and let the advisory committee, you know, determine its scope and, and let it constitute itself, just change one word from "may" to "shall," and.
I think we did do that.
Okay.
It is, it is "shall." All right. Marcos, are you clear? Okay, good. Yolanda?
Ready.
Roll call.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell. Counselor Mayestas.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Treehill. Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez. Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes, and I want to say thank you to the commission or the public who spent time with us tonight, and we look forward to this continued conversation with everyone as we go forward. Thank you. Okay, let's move on, because it's midnight. Consideration of Bill Number 201642, adoption of ordinance number 2016.
Forty-three.
Forty-three. If I could just ask members of the public to exit as quiet as possible so the council can consider, continue its meeting. An ordinance amending subsection 2-1.2 relating to the compensation of the mayor and establishing an independent salary commission to set the mayor's salary effective March 19th. I think it's pretty self-explanatory if, we can go to the public hearing really quick. And once again, just ask members of the public to please exit as quietly as possible. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to open this up to a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council regarding this ordinance? Public hearing has closed. Questions from the council? Counselor Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification, there was a change that was amended by staff to take out the League of Women Voters because they're not able to participate in this capacity, but it, but in lieu of, it added a community organization. I don't understand what that means. That could be anything, any, so I don't know if there's some clarification from staff.
Answer to that. Do you know how we got the community organization in there? Jesse?
On that point?
Counselor Ives?
Yeah, the League expressed the desire not to be specifically named, but they really are an organization that is a broadly-based community organization within the city of Santa Fe that tracks many municipally significant issues, so the language was simply meant to identify the type and class of organization that the League is by saying, by.
So a member of the League could be appointed, and they would be appointed under the auspice of community organization. of community organization?
Certainly possible.
Or could that be another community organization member? But do we know which ones?
Any community, right? Any community organization, I'm assuming if it's nonprofit.
It doesn't say nonprofit.
Jesse, you don't...
Mr. Mayor, counselors, I think using community organization leaves it sufficiently broad that there are a lot of options as to, to who could be appointed.
That's, I don't know, I'm tired. It doesn't make sense to me, but I'm not going to...
Other questions? With the pleasure of the council?
Move to approve.
Roll call.
Counsel Ives?
Yes.
Counsel Lindell? Counsel Maestas?
Yes.
Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counsel Truhill? Counsel Villarreal? Counsel Dominguez? Counsel Harris? Mayor Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Lynette, you worked really hard tonight, really appreciate it.
It's a whole nother day.
Whole other day. All right, we are adjourned, thanks, everybody, for your time.